Hey, we're getting ready for the planning board meeting for the town of Western. Today is Tuesday, Monday, the 18th of March. Today in the planning board meeting, we don't have an agenda yet, but we believe they're going to be starting the process now that the zoning ordinance is completed, of going through the comprehensive plan that was last done in 2019. So, once that's started, that's going to be quite the project. Probably take a while to complete that. Folks out there from the civics page and to discover Westernville, we're getting ready for the meeting. It's nine minutes out here, so it should be starting pretty quickly. I'm going to go grab the microphone so we can get that set up real quick and start recording as soon as the meeting starts, okay?
Carol, are you going to be around tomorrow afternoon?
I work.
Oh, okay. I wanted to stop by and take a look and see what you got my way of pastures. Are they?
Yeah.
I'm probably the smallest, other than the little old lady who plays sports, I'm the smallest member of the Capitol.
Okay.
Okay. What I'll do is I'll check with the Capitol because I know they've got, they've got.
Gentlemen.
This is old.
Yeah.
Have we never approved those or what?
No, that was one.
Okay.
This is.
Oh, okay. Right. Yeah, I have heard from that lady that came in and did the initial presentation. She said, "How are you guys, how are you guys doing with your zoning?" They're just waiting for, waiting for the zoning to go in there. So, I told her, it looks like it'll probably be late spring. Last week's board meeting, they pretty much decided, they pretty much decided that they were done with the review. They gave me two changes. One was on the, where we had the motorcycle, October motorcycle parks, measured the sound only 500 feet from the edge of the property, and then I put a signature page and a change page. That was it, that's all they wanted. So, I don't know if they've officially scheduled a public hearing or are they going to vote on it next month or what.
Paul is not going to be here, what about Peter?
He's usually here, but he, he works late in his office, so he doesn't always get here.
The other, I tested over there. That is Jamie Giardino's husband.
Christian.
This is first name, Christian.
Yes.
I know him as Jamie's husband.
Yes. We got a call and we'll get started. Rise. Thank you, everybody coming out tonight. Hopefully we're not going to get too much snow. First off, I'd like to welcome the other new member, Christian Giardino. Giardino, oh, sorry. GIA?
Yes.
Is something you'd like?
Yeah. Phil.
So, it's pronounced J-A-R-D-I-N-O?
J-A-R-D-I-N-O.
J-A-R-D-I-N-O?
Yes.
Like J-A-R.
Like the, like the J-A-R.
Jar.
Yeah, J-A-R-D-I-N-O.
Welcome, Chris. I'm new to the, he doesn't introduce me.
No, I'm sorry. Secretary April. Everybody knows April. So, first order of business I have got, this was the last draft of Mary Central stopping our secretary, but she took minutes at the June meeting. Meeting. So, this was her rough notes. We're going to have to go through here and try to make more sense of it, put it together, and then we can vote on that for tonight. But it was done by the Environmental Design Partnership, LLP. We'll add that in there. We actually have, that was a report that was done for the Ball Doodles. On the second bullet point there, the only thing I want to hear, it's the New York State Seeker map, or the, not the map, but the dump was not found on, what? You can go on New York State's website. For the name of that again?
Yeah, I forget what the exact map is, but you can locate all of, all of the, like the brown, you know, brownfield sites and stuff.
I'm trying to look.
They're not listed there.
Right, is it just a seeker map or is it a?
Uh, the DEC has the map, it's not, it's not, it's not seeker, but. I think they mapped environmentally sensitive areas or something like that.
Right. I'll get the name of that. Next thing we had written down, or then we took that into consideration, it was the two, two things left on the seeker for that project. And then we took a vote and we voted on to pass it on to the zoning board of appeals for the next step.
Yeah, in fact, that was, I don't, Mary put it in there, but we actually have a letter from the DEC saying they had no objection to the project. I think that's somewhere in the file.
So, we'll just, we'll put in there that motion was made to make a recommendation to send it along to the zoning board. And then the other thing was a solar energy project. We had a lady presented the project from the company. Her name was Lee McIntyre. She was the project developer for sole source power. And we'll just add that in there. The last bullet point, I don't, I just cross that out. I don't think we have to worry about putting that good investment for the property order to town. That's not, the minutes aren't a place for that. And the only other change I had was, it's not a condo project, it's more of an apartment.
It's an apartment complex, yeah. There he is. We knew you'd be here. We saved a spot right for you. That must be in the first row. Sorry, I was late.
Oh, you're fine. You can sign that later.
Who is this?
This is Peter. So, these are minutes that were from Mary after she had her, her last meeting as being a secretary. So, it's just a rough notes that she had gotten, so we're just going to go down through there. We got down to the bottom here. Yes. So, I don't see anything else that we got to add or, I'm just looking for Rita to get back.
I moved to amend the minutes of June 17th, 2023, as outlined by Peter.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Wait for.
Thank you. Sort of be passed around, right?
Yes, yeah. Fill it out while she's on the phone.
I have all your stuff. I know you. I don't have email address.
Yeah, that's.
Since we have a break in the action, have we had, has there been much helicopter action going on?
Yeah, I've seen them fly a couple of times. They're, they're already in operation.
Because then we have helicopters from the base too, so.
Well, yeah, you see, you see the, well, the one from the base will fly every once in a while. Drum will come over, but I saw them flying out the other day.
Okay.
Because they head out that way and then wherever they're going.
No complaints about them violating the no-fly zone?
No. Actually, I think the other day they were both together, both not go flights.
They might have been, yeah.
Because it looked like they might have been somewhere where they both were needed because they were very behind. The one was behind, the other one headed back to Rome.
It's good to know it's serving a purpose, that's good.
And who seconded it?
Justin.
Justin seconded it. Okay.
Really?
Careful, hold on.
Yeah.
When Rita comes back, we can vote on it. I'll leave her out. That's a beautiful cabinet against that wall. I haven't even paid attention to it.
Didn't it?
Yeah. Do you know they had any particular purpose?
It was a pass-through for the kitchen. There's cabinet storage and then kitchenette step-off from the kitchen. Other side.
Okay, so that door opens and goes right to the kitchen.
And the door opens on the back side and all that, that's where your dishes could be. Probably back when it was a hotel.
Actually, a door behind a little wall hanging too. This building was moved from Delta.
Yeah, it was a whole building.
There's a cement brought up here and protected, and that wasn't the same, it's not the same size as the original, it's smaller. The original was bigger.
Yeah.
And was that part of the original structure?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Pretty incredible. Yeah, those two posts and a beam up there holding the second floor up, most of the stuff you see in here is the original building. I did.
Just didn't stick out, huh?
Just don't remember half of it.
Yeah. I thumb through it every now and then and I pick something up, I like, every time.
Make some money?
Oh, I've got six negotiations on hand, so I'm going right now.
So, we went over those minutes, Carol made a minute, or a motion to accept it, Justin seconded it, and I'm going to call in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
So, that takes care of the June 23. I will get, I'll make the corrections and then give that to you. Once we have an official final copy, then we can send it on. I didn't have, the only other thing I talked about in an email I sent out was the master plan, I'm already coming up on it, it's five years.
Can you believe that?
So, yeah. Probably won't start anything on that or we'll wait for the zoning to get done. And then we can, I think basically we just have to take a look at it and if we have any recommendations, we can ask to, see if the board wants to have us look through it again.
Yeah, I think the, the one question that, that occurred to me is because the original survey that we use to base a lot of stuff on, it was so old.
Yeah.
Do we want to recommend to the town board that they seriously consider doing another survey like that so we can kind of update things? Because there have been some, you know, some fairly significant changes in the town since that survey was taken.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
How old was the survey?
Back in the eighties.
Well, the, the survey was 2000.
Was it? Well, that's right, it was, it was updated in 2000, but the original full-up survey was by the late eighties.
I think we got like a third of them back.
Yeah.
There was 25 questions or something like that.
Yeah.
And basically overwhelming thing was keep everything the same.
Yeah, don't raise my taxes.
Yeah.
That would be other combat. But yeah, I think it's, you know, even if you're talking about 2000, you're talking about 24 years since we've done that. And we can, you know, we can, part of, if the thing is we address, you know, how, how, what's the appropriate way to handle things like solar installations or if somebody comes for windbells or something where they're, where they're permitted.
Yeah, we can, I'll have to go back through and see if I can find one of the originals.
Yeah, I don't think I've got one anywhere.
I think we may have one.
It was on, it was before I was on there.
We may have one.
Okay.
I think we've got one from there.
Or we can ask Missy to look in the records and see if we have to, should be a copy of at least added there, so.
I mean, if everybody else in the board agrees that's a good idea, we can make a motion, we'll just write a little letter to the town board and say, you know.
At least recommend it, encourage them to, you know, to consider redoing the survey.
Yeah.
Would anybody like to make a motion for that?
So, moved. I second it.
Second. All those in favor?
Yeah.
So, we'll write a letter to the town board encouraging them to maybe send out a survey and get updated responses with the master plan coming up on its five-year revision.
Yeah. And now, I think most of the data from the 2020 census is pretty well compiled and available so we can start incorporating that too.
Yeah, see how far we.
I mean, I know, you know, just the one surprising fact, I found out, while looking up other things, I was, I was asking Tug Hill about a particular system of grants, and they say your median income is too high. I said, "What's the median income?" Median income of this town is very, very high. It's in the upper, it's like $58,500 median income.
Is that because of Chigka Point?
I don't know. Well, you have, you have to compare, you know, the median versus the average too, as they're, they can be quite different. The median is right in the middle of all of the household incomes. So, half of them are greater than that, half of them are less. I don't know what the average is because they didn't have that data. I mean, you get two or three rich people on the corner of Elmer Hill or in Chigka Point and they can kind of skew that, but. But it effectively disqualified us from certain grants. Or, you know, effectively said, "Don't bother."
Did we check into USDA as well?
That was one of the ones I was looking at was with the USDA grant.
We should talk to Bill on that.
Yeah. Now, I don't know if, if we want to take that on, you know, as a side activity of the planning board, is to keep an eye on where there may or may not be grant opportunities available. You know, this is just one of the things we, we could just, you know, recommend. I mean, when you start to look at this building, you know, what's available out there from, from the standpoint of historic grants, you know, for preserving the building.
Do they, I'm not that familiar with the grant processes. I go through like a lead agency sort of?
There is, well, yeah, usually one lead agency will write the grant.
The town.
But now the state has, for, for most of the state grants, there's a common entry point on the web. And you sign up for that and then you put your grants in through that and they direct it off to whatever agency is doing it. That's for state level stuff, so.
They know you can hire a grant writer, but I don't know if like one of the boards.
I, you know, I don't know. I've looked, I've looked at some of the grants and stuff, I mean, it's that we could, but, you know, they're not, they're relatively straightforward. I mean, once you learn how to focus the grant on what that agency or, or group is interested in preserving, you know, you write it that way, it's kind of like writing a resume for a job. So, what, what other, what kind of jobs do they have? Well, you'd be surprised how much experience I have in just having the expertise.
Yeah.
So, we, we don't have to adopt that as a formal policy, but you know, it's something we could consider doing anyway.
It's about networking and, you know.
And Tug, Tug Hill is a good source of information for that sort of thing too. They, they have a, a pretty good opportunity. Monday's meeting, I don't know who's interested in going, but on May 1st and 2nd, Tug Hill Commission does their annual training session. The Monday afternoon session is, is focused and then they have a reception afterwards. Tuesday is the actual meeting. They have four different training sessions, which includes things like zoning boards, planning boards, they have lawyers come in to talk about aspects of planning and zoning, a bunch of other things. If you go to, I think it's tughillcommission.org, you can find the, you can find the, the agenda that's coming up for it and all the different classes they have.
That was Tug Hill, right?
Tug Hill, I think it's tughillcommission, it's tughill.org, I think, or tughill.ny.org. And for whatever it's worth, they have offered to sponsor one attendee from the town that will cover the cost. I think if you get it in before the 1st of April, it's like 75 bucks for, you know, for the one-day session. tughillcommercial.org. Okay, there you go. Did that work? Were you trying it? I'm just saving the names so I can look for it later. Who's Bill, by the way? You mentioned Bill.
My husband.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that up in Jefferson College again or?
There, no, it's at the, it's at the Turning Stone.
At the Turning Stone.
They did that last year and everybody thought that was really great, so. Are all the grants that might be out there tied to the median income of the town?
Not that I know of.
Okay. The particular, the particular one that I was looking at, and I sent a note to Katie Malinowski, who's the, the chair up there, and she said, "Nah, I don't think you're going to qualify, so your median income is too high." But there's, there's other ones around there that are available.
And not that it's happening, but like as an example, so Rome, I think, signed up to be a trail community or a, there's a trail city, something like. I just read it in the paper there where they're going to, so they're going to get some grant money to expand their, their trails. Us being an outlying community may be in line for a grant if we decided that we wanted to link or something, you know? Because I, when I first got on the, the planning board, they wanted to, it's called the North Country Trail, it goes from, what, North Dakota all the way to Maine.
Yeah.
But they wanted, they, part of the New York State would come through here, go up the Black River Canal, join in with the Bree Trail system and then head east that way. So, it was, they, they actually presented here about, you know, seeing if we would be willing to let them put the trail through here. They're, they're going to follow the canal, the old canal was what their plan was, but that was 20 years ago.
They never did. There's, there's, they're, they're reviving interest in it because the, the current trail expansion will go from the bridge at Wright Settlement Road up to the Fish Hatchery, that's their next improvement, like, and then they're talking about going from there, they would actually cross the river, go along, you know, the, the old tow path where the old canal came across. I don't know how they were going to get back over to 46, but then they want to go from there all the way up to Booneville.
Yeah, they want to get to the.
They would end up using the.
The state market, Delta, but then they also wanted to Pixley Falls. Because once they get to Pixley Falls, then they can get on the Bree Trails.
Bring the trail and go up from there.
Yeah. But they, yeah, the lady was here, I think they got, I don't know how, they have, there's large segments of it done, that, from that North Dakota to Maine, but they just, I heard it was mentioned like a week, a year ago in some, I think out in Western New York, they put a big section in.
Yeah, there's, there's additional money that's going on the Empire State Trail, which is a canal trail too, so.
But that is just an example of how we would qualify for, you know, the different grants that would have been out there, but.
Yeah.
Because there's only three, three cities in, I think, New York that are going to be designated that trail.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, I sat on that committee.
There's just. Okay.
Can't explain how I got.
Yeah.
Sometimes I say puzzle, but.
But yeah, that's, I know they want to keep doing that and.
Yeah, build a network, basically.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because they have that one trail along 840 out to Riscany, and I think they're eventually going to try to connect that to the Rome and.
Nice to have.
Yeah.
Well, right, right now you can go from Stanwicks by the old lumber company, you can go from there all the way to Albany.
Okay.
On the Erie Canal Trail. There's sections of it that are still roadway, but there's major sections of the thing that have been, they've basically taken the old rail routes. So, it's either the canal path, which goes from basically Stanwicks to Riscany, then they drop over and they follow the Barge Canal all the way to far east side of Utica on Dyke Road. Then there you got to ride roads and then you pick up the trail and it goes literally all the way down to Albany and halfway down to Hudson River too.
Okay, I'll talk to you soon.
And I've ridden western sections of it all the way out to Jordan that are, you know, fairly well done. One thing you discover in riding canal trails, there's a lot of boring sections there. I mean, they're pretty, but they're boring.
They don't turn a lot.
They don't turn a lot and you're riding along, but unfortunately, when you ride along the old Erie Canal, half of it's just turned into bogs and slump. And in the middle of the summer, it stinks. But it is interesting, you see a lot of turtles and other stuff there, so. It's good exercise for anybody who wants to try it. And it's, it's flat, that's the nice thing about it.
Yeah, that's the reason why they put it there.
And now, of course, the city came through and they put in, basically from down by the footbridge across the river, you can just about ride all the way up to Wright Settlement Road on the new river trail. Goes all the way up to, that's almost three miles long, a beautiful trail, to ride along the river in a couple of cases.
Yeah, they made it like onlys and then I see now they're going to go.
No, they're, they're going to go across, cross back down again and. So, that trail along the river, on route, as you head toward the Fish Hatchery.
Yes.
Where I walk my dogs off, there's a snowmobile trail, that's part of that trail system. That will be, yeah, that's part of the, the trail system. While the state still owns the right-of-way, I don't, they, they pass it from agency to agency, but New York State still owns the right-of-way for the entire Black River Canal path all the way up to Booneville. And probably from there on up north, I think it went up as far as Lions Falls, is about as far as if there's any active trail there. Because the old river, Black River Canal started at Booneville, came down the gorge and then went up north and tied in, so they tied into where the Black River was navigable.
Yeah, that's.
And there's a whole section that goes from Booneville down along the little feeder canal all the way into Forestport. About 10 miles of trail there too. Because like the outdoors, there's lots of places to bike and, and bike and walk and snowmobile in the winter, or, or ski.
Because they could still use that, the state controls it, because they could still feed Lake Delta from, not Hinkley, but it comes down.
Forestport reservoir.
Forestport. Because you go up the gorge.
It starts at the Forestport reservoir, followed by what they call the feeder canal. That goes into Booneville, that feeds into the Black River Canal. And in theory, they can still run the water down through there all, I think it would probably drain away before it ever got to Rome.
If you're doing something, you'll go up the gorge and that would be running. And that's what they're doing, they're moving water down to Delta.
That's all clear, that's not with Pixley Falls. The falls aren't part of that water, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, that is. Yeah, the Lansing, well, the Lansing Kill comes down, it parallels the Black River Canal and then joins with the Mohawk River up in Hillside, I guess is where.
The canal, it, it used to be all separate, but now the Lansing Kill has broken through in a couple of places. Now, once you get below like the park, or even before the park, I think it, it urges. Because you, you can see the old canal bed as you go up through. And then, cause you can see the Old Canal bed as you go up through.
Yep.
And when you just come out of the gorge, you can see the canal, and that's where you see the water ripping, and that's when you know they're moving water down, and then eventually the Lansing Kill, you know, is merged with it at some place, and then that, that carries it down to the Mohawk.
And wintertime, the Brea Association actually grooms Cross Country Trail all the way up the old tow path up in Booneville.
So that, that would be an idea, like I said, back to going to the grant money and then you can, that's how, the way we would get it, you know, as far as like a housing thing or something, we probably wouldn't qualify because of the median income.
Yeah, I have looked up things like grants for water systems and stuff, and it's almost all of the ones out there for improving existing public water systems.
Right.
Almost nothing available for creating one.
And the problem, yeah, and our, the problem in the town is our water system's not,
Public, they're all private.
It's private. So the government, they don't wanna give money to a private entity. They want the town to take it over first, then they'll give you a grant. But that's, the town was gonna take that over, that's,
Yeah, the probability of the city expanding their water district all the way up, up 46 and Cree Slum.
Yeah, they're up the town line.
Did they get that far, Ben?
Mm-hmm. There's a pumping station on Golf Road. So they got, I don't know if it's all the way to Standish, but they, that's what this summer, or that past summer, there are all those houses along the Palisades, all got water. But I don't know how far off the road it goes.
No.
But now they got the hard part done. You know, from there to State Park probably is not that hard.
Once you get around the corner, you're okay.
Yeah, they went through that big, by the Palisades, that big ravine, they were down in there.
Yeah.
Other than that, that's all I had for tonight, so. If anybody else has anything.
I just got the one question about,
Yes, oh, go ahead, everything else.
So, we have some questions that are coming up the rest of the, the sale. And agents are being asked, are those gonna be able to do Airbnbs? We've got a few people that are doing outstate, so I was gonna ask if we could ask the zoning board if they could address that issue.
Actually, the question is more of what's in the new zoning law, and yes, that is a consideration in there. It's a special, it would be under special use permit, they would have to come in and apply and provide all the information.
I've already, already doing it for, having a fight, and now there's two other homes that's coming up, literally, from, in our office. And we're already getting calls to say, we're back to buy, as may Airbnb or FSBO. So I was asked to address that.
I think, I think right now, the restriction is on, it would have to be an owner occupied house.
None of them are gonna be on occupied, and the two that are,
For now, I don't think, I would have to go back and reconfirm it, because there's a different definition, we call it tourist home or boarding house, but those would be considered owner occupied and operated, as opposed to just rent the place out for a month at a time for somebody that wants it. But there is, there is a new term in there called short-term rentals, which would cover the Airbnb type of things.
I bought some properties in the city, and I was talking to the city and like, a bed and breakfast, the owner had to be up.
Had to be up, yeah.
But an Airbnb, they said, we have no rules on that, you can do that anywhere you want.
Isn't that ridiculous?
Yeah, cause we, unless we make a rule, you can do it. So that's what the city of Rome was saying, telling me just six months ago.
That's interesting, cause if you talk to some of the lawyers, they'll tell you, if you don't put it in your zoning as permitted use, it's not permitted. You have, you have to define it and permit it, otherwise it becomes, well, what happens, it becomes an ambiguity. So, well, we didn't define it, we don't know what to do about it, and in most cases, the court will, will adjudicate it in favor of the owner. But,
So the question is, how many, how many do we want?
By the, by the time, by the time meteorological summer arrives on the 1st of June, the new law will probably be in place. Cause I think the board is, I don't know if they've called a public hearing or not, but at the, at the meeting last week, they said, okay, we're gonna take it up, put it up for a public hearing and take comments and stuff, so.
I think the, just the question is, how many do we want?
Yeah, well, I mean,
I mean, I'm thinking about planning.
The zoning does not number things.
No, I'm just thinking about planning.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we want them?
Well, the people are not gonna be living around here, some of the people are not gonna be living around here, so the upkeep.
Yeah.
We've already got a lot of homes in that area that are not being kept up.
Yeah, and they're, one of the things that the town board would need to, to consider is the nuisance properties law.
Yeah, that was the other thing, I mean, you live next door to an Airbnb, they're having parties, you live next door. Do you want that noise?
Yeah.
I mean, is it fair that people live in, you know, I mean, I know, I wouldn't want somebody who's having parties every, every weekend.
Wouldn't some of that fall under codes, though?
Uh, yeah, some of it is.
You know, so if it came up as nuisance, codes would probably be asked to investigate.
Well, they would, and if, if the town puts a nuisance law into place, codes would be enforcing that anyway.
Yeah.
Regardless of it. Right now, I don't know, right now, I don't know what kinda teeth Scott would have to do something like that. There is, there is an existing noise ordinance,
Yeah.
That between certain hours, the noise has gotta be, you can't, you can't have a lot of noises. That would be one way to do it, but I can't imagine Scott getting out of bed at 11 o'clock at night, coming down and banging on somebody's door and saying, be quiet, that's,
Well, even the fire hall to go and do it, cause he's on a, on a fire duty.
Sheriff's, yeah, that's the sheriff, that would be a law enforcement thing.
Yeah, cause the sheriff would just, I don't know if they have it on their database in the car, but, you know, they, they can look up if the town has an ordinance for sound, and then they can comply.
And what's, what, the other thing is, what's going on with all these homes that are in disrepair now?
Yeah, no, that, the law is out there, and so it's basically upon the citizens if they wanna bring it up to the town board.
Yeah, the town does have an unsafe structures law, so that if the codes officer determines them to be unsafe and, you know, a danger to, you know, to public health and safety, he can cite the places and refer them, he, he actually ends up having, he can tell them what needs to be corrected, if they don't, he returns, he refers it to the town board. The town board can then decide how they wanna enforce it. They can find the owner, they can order the property torn down or cleaned up and build the owner for it, there's a number of, a number of methods of recourse that they have in that law.
It's out of our hands, it's in,
Yeah.
This one right down here on Main Street, it's just bulldozing it and repairing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this one down here, there's two down there.
There's a couple of them.
There's two on Buck Hill, it's quite a few in the village.
No, the, the tools are in place, it's just, it's up to other people to use them, so.
Okay, that's all I understand.
Yeah.
All that.
All right, we'll look into that a little bit more, maybe. I can send an email to Charlie to see how he's interpreting what we have in the zoning as far as the owner. Cause I think we did mention the owner has to be there, there's two different definitions.
We have two different definitions, there's two different classes. One, one is, is a bed and breakfast, which is an owner occupied operated, the other one is a short-term rental. That does not require the owner.
Yeah, another BSBO is a whole house rental, and an Airbnb is very similar. But we've got two, almost three, and then there's two homes coming up, and we're already getting questions. Can, from people that are outside that area completely, can, you know, are we able, can we buy it and turn it into an Airbnb or a BSBO? And they don't even, they're not even gonna move it up here into, into New York State. So that's why I'm questioning that.
Now, I have a friend that lives in Jefferson, the town, which is about two hours south of here, and he's got an Airbnb. But he said his town went, and they, last year, they outlawed them, or no more. What's there is there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, how many more do we want? We've got two, I mean, how many more do we want? That's my question. From the planning point of view, I'm looking at that.
Well, I never would've thought down there anybody would rent them.
No, I know.
I couldn't believe there's so many wedding venues.
Yeah.
Cause they're that close to New York City, but then they'll come up, and then the families will rent the houses
Yeah.
to, to attend the wedding venues. It's, never would've thought of it, you know.
Well, I mean, that may be, that may be a subject for comment, cause the law hasn't passed, and if somebody has comments that said, you know, how many of these things are you gonna allow, what kind of regulations are gonna be in place for their operation, you know, that's a good, good place in public comment, for, you know, ask the question of the, you know, the town board, say, what do you think of this or that?
So I know, like in Old Forge, they're, they're gonna do something about it, but they're in a whole different league than we are. I mean, people are buying them as an investment property, so now the locals can't afford to live there.
Correct.
Because, but, you know, I don't see, we don't have that kinda draw.
Think you'd be a bit surprised, on the price of these homes that's gonna be going on.
Yeah, I don't know, my bigger, my bigger question to these outside buyers was, do you think you could actually do enough business to pay for the home?
Well, I think they're looking at it from being close to this, you know, the ski area, close to downtown, but we don't get much,
Well, Delta, Delta Lake, yeah, I suppose.
Everybody I know who owns one says they're making money. I have never heard anybody tell me I'm losing my shirt on this thing.
They're all making money.
And I'm like, here, there, you're making money there? It's like amazing.
Well, we're caught up to, and that, it's an 80-mile radius outside of Clay, is, that's where a lot of it's coming from, cause they, if, was it Will Speed, or if they come in,
Micro, yeah.
Or Micro, they figure it's in an 80-mile radius, so now people who are outside it, there, or, through Zillow, or, you know, can go on there, put in the zip code, and then they're just gonna speculate and buy property, cause they think it's safer than the stock market. So they'll do anything within the 80 miles, they'll just, they'll buy. But I didn't realize, and she's talked, I got friends up in Old Forge in real estate, that, that zip code will come up and people just buy it. They're like, it's a rock ledge, it's not buildable.
That man.
They buy it, and then they realize they can't build there, and they put it back on, somebody else buys it.
For profit.
Yeah, yeah.
For a profit.
Yeah. It was,
Wow, that's the danger of minds sight unseen.
Yeah. But they said it's just, it's insane, cause it'll be a call from California. There's a property listed, I'll take it. Do you wanna know anything about it? Nope.
I don't know, see, I grew up outside of New York City, and I, I love it here. And I can't see why people wouldn't want to come here. There's the ski resort, you got the lake, you got Pixley Falls, you got all these trails, cause I've been on these trails. You know, to me, it's, it's wonderful, I can't imagine ever leaving here.
Yeah.
And I can imagine why people would wanna come here.
If you're,
But people here may not see it, but you, you live in Long Island, you live in New York City.
Yeah, and if you're into outdoor stuff, it's a great place to be, it really is.
Yeah.
I don't,
I don't know as a secretary if I can say anything, but, but there's a house that's next door to us, and it was purchased by someone out of New York City for an Airbnb, for an Airbnb. And they had no idea what they were getting into financially, and they have all but abandoned the property. They can't afford to finish it. They didn't know all this last year. I mean, it, I think it would be nice to have some guidelines, right, that there's a timeframe, that, that they need to have it, and they need to have the funding to,
Yeah, and most of, see, most of that falls into the state codes enforcement. Uniform Building Code, the Energy Codes, the sanitary codes, the fire codes and stuff, that, you know, when they buy it and they turn the property over, there's certain compliance that they, you know, they have to bring it up to a certain amount of compliance in order to use it.
But the timing of that, I mean, this is going on two years, and the barn has no roof, and it's leaning, and the, you know.
Yeah, they were going hot and heavy for a while, and then they,
Right. I think their contractor did a number on them. But I think also, there's not enough contractors in this area to do the work as well.
Not at all.
And, and I think that that's something that should be, I mean, they're used to just having anyone, you know, having lines of people, and everyone so backed up. It took us almost two years to get our house back pulled together after the tornado. But I'd like to see some guidelines and regulations of some sort.
Well, it can't be the wild, wild west, there has to be, but then I ask, when you buy a property, they don't, what is your purpose for it, right? You know what the purpose is, but they're not required to disclose that.
We're not allowed to ask that.
Right.
We're not allowed to ask, you know, what you're gonna do with this home, we're not allowed to ask that.
So there should be some guidelines and some,
Can you please ask them, have you, have you reviewed the town zoning ordinance to see whether you can,
Obviously, that's for the us, it's by and beware, by due diligence.
Yeah.
We can't say anything like that to them, cause then we're, we're going against ethics, codes of ethics.
They just haven't called me.
So your code of ethics won't let you say, before you do that, you should check with the town. Seems that would be the most ethical thing to do.
I know, but we're not allowed to do that. We're not allowed to ask why you're buying the house, when, the other thing that's just coming out now, you're not allowed to ask somebody where they're from, or where you're moving in from. We're not allowed to do that anymore. So, if somebody says, says to us, I'm moving from North Carolina, okay, but we're not allowed to ask those questions anymore.
What's that accent you have?
Yeah, I'm not allowed to. They can ask me, but I don't have that accent.
You can't ask them that either?
No, no.
Can't say, wow, that's an interesting accent.
No, that's a violation from, yeah. But I mean, there's so much going on now. It's, it's a lot now, though. But, you know, I do agree that we need, we need to address that more.
Well, I mean, the town board will have a hearing on it, obviously, you can, but I will look into some of this and see what, maybe like I said, we'll see what Charlie thinks and,
Yeah, and they, you know, they may wanna enact a separate law governing that particular use. You know, the zoning law says, you know, you can do it here, or you can do it there, but you can't do it here. And then the town can say, well, if you're gonna do it there where it's permitted, here's the requirements you have to meet.
And that type of activity is a great example of why we wrote into the laws like every five years, cause 10 years ago, you never thought Airbnb, you, you know, or you wouldn't, I don't know how long they've been out, but it hasn't been. So stuff like that, the technology keeps changing, you don't, in the eighties, they never thought solar panels would be all over the place, so.
That's right. Have we heard any more from that?
Yes, I've had a couple inquiries as to what the status of our zoning law is, cause I think they're gonna wait till after that's passed, cause where they wanna put it right now, it would be a stretch to say it's a permitted use.
But once, once that, Current zoning law.
Under the current law, yeah, so once the new one is in place and it's an RRA district, yeah, it's a permitted use with a special use permit.
Yeah, for whatever reason, that, that RS was not, you know, it just didn't fit the way they did it back then.
I have no idea what, what went through their minds 50 years ago.
Oh, I got a good idea, but.
Well, it's, cause if you read, if you read the ordinance as to what that district was, it was supposed to apply to campsites along the north side of Lake Delta.
Right.
And it extends another mile and a half up the hill into basically agricultural and forest areas. So there must've been somebody up there that, that the town board, the planning board didn't like, I don't know. It's a long time ago, before my time.
Maybe the Bible camp was gonna buy it all.
I was in here for a meeting and we were talking about mini nuclear plants, writing that into the code. You recall that conversation?
Yeah, no, that was, cause they're like sodium, whatever they're starting with.
Well, there's, there's new, what they call, what they call modular or manufactured reactors that are much smaller in size.
I mean, it was just, it's not, like, but it's just an example of how things change so quickly, you don't know, the, like the 5G towers, that was a new one that you can basically cite them wherever you want, because they're so small, and so people, like in Long Island, they come home and all of a sudden they get a mini tower on the sidewalk. You know, they're like, what the hell, how'd this get here? So they had to, struggle to keep up with what's going on.
Yeah.
Well, the world changes faster and faster.
Seems that way.
Or we get slower and slower. Yeah, that's who, I move to adjourn.
Yes. Favor. Thank you. Now, I always remember the book there, the canal guys, they were all, the people living next to the canal were like five miles an hour, way too fast, and they can't deal with this, it's out of control. Yeah, I was thinking, why wouldn't we want, Pins, there's pins on,
Why wouldn't we want people coming here?
We want it.
The ski resort and the, The ski resort and the lake, they spend money here, maybe there'll be a storm in town again, you know, maybe they'll be.
Well, we're the one that's down there, just waiting to be open.
No, we're not, no, I don't know if people are opposed, it's more of a.
Just need to control.
I mean, we, you know, we may end up, we may end up writing an additional paragraph in there that says, owners are responsible for, you know, for the short-term rentals, owners are fully responsible for their behavior, their renters at all times.
It'd be like if you owned the house and the one next door to you has a lot of parking, but they have enough to sit, say, ten people, every weekend.
Ten cars coming.
Yeah.
You find three cars on the driveway.
I've rented places where five estate and five of us have our cars, just because we were coming from a different town.
And then, so that your neighbor, you're like, man, every weekend I gotta deal with.
I wouldn't want it, I wouldn't want it, but then I can't see my neighbor's houses.
Well, right, well, that's, in which case you're right.
Yeah, exactly.
It's gonna be a short-term rental, it makes you four bedrooms, you just have minimum of three parking places.
I'd say it was way back when, before the Airbnb and VRBO and all the short-term rental. Well, short-term, it was Outer Banks, you know, the beach house, they said two cars, or four cars, depending on how big the place was. If it slept, if it had four bedrooms, it was four cars, and it'd sleep eight, and I remember going down the one. That means like people more southern couldn't drive up, like the northerners went down two of them.
Run, run the place down.
Yeah, but then we got around, we got around that by parking in the grocery store parking lot, dumped two or three cars in there for two days. There were ways around it, but it was.
Cool light didn't care.
But I think it's, it's a delicate line, you gotta protect the neighbor, but you also want, you want people to be able to use their property, so it's.
I wasn't gonna.
Probably go over to Woodshop.
There's different towns around here where the codes is really strict, like twenty-four hours a day, they're on the hunt for something.
Yeah.
And I mean, those are the ones that most people are like, no, I'm not gonna get into rental or whatever, they just stay right away because they don't want all the hassle of all that, so. Some people look at us, we kind of lax, it's there, but it's kind of lax, you know.
Web has another issue that a lot of those places that people are renting camps, so it's water, it's just a point, you know, the subjects are.
Well, point in the ground, and a composting toilet, too, sitting on the rocks.
Yeah, you've got seven people coming up every four days.
Well, it has to be regulated.
I mean, we've been insulated.
And then you can't regulate unless you have enough people to enforce the regulations.
Yeah, that is a bigger issue.
The town's been insulated in this, because of geography, we're not lean, we have big, open areas where it was easy to do developments, and they have water, you know, so we're, we don't have a lot of water here.
They have drainage, too.
Yeah, and a lot of our land that is drainable is owned by families that have had it for generations, and it's farmland, and it's probably not gonna go anywhere, so there's not the turnover. And then you get up on top of the hills, and then you get into a whole different soil profile, and it's a little harsher.
Up where we are, yeah, it's clay, that's all I got is clay, nothing drains.
Yeah, right.
Do your fields, is it drained pretty well, or do you have any standing water, just drains right down?
Once you get down, once you get down that lower level by the, by the road on down there, it's, it's just all, it's all gravel and emerald, and it just drains like, like nothing.
It drains almost too fast for subsurface disposal.
So the maple will, will have like two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of sap go through, and you think my yard would be, you know, but my drive, everything handles it, you never know that it was there.
Yeah, my yard drains.
But if I was up at your places, you'd have ponds.
Yeah. My drainage is so bad that the liner, my pool floats up every year, I had to throw the pump behind the liner all the time and suck the water out, it doesn't drain, doesn't drain, it rains enough in my backyard, so.
Well, your side of the road is like that, the ones crossing the main roads, you're still there, when they were busy muddling a house.
I've got six of those, I've made two, I'm just going crazy, my front lawn.
Yeah, I've got a license for it.
Nice to meet you.
I've got, I've got these people calling on offers, so.
Thank you. Both of them, back there, yes, yeah, they're draining bad, basically, you have to go dig it up, dig it down, the whole system, the whole thing is a drain bed. And, and we had to put in a pump system, so it goes in the tank, as it flushes through the house, it goes in the holding tank, the tank, that tank goes up, it pumps the whole thing out into the field, and then it stops. So you dose it all at once, it gets recovered, and then about two days later, you dose it all out, it's like, yeah.
So I don't know what happened, when I moved into the house, I get here, I'm at the first.
Next door.
Eight years or so, I can smell.
After your summer comes up to the surface.
Doesn't.
I don't smell anything, I did that, it's a little cherry.
May, it may have loosened up a little bit, or you may have just enough evaporations.
I was told today by the.
But yeah, even, even with mine, there's some rare occasions after some heavy rains. Some of my gardens are all raised beds.
I was curious about earth here, now for myself.
Right. I'm curious to see that you've had a threshold on certain, that's interesting, I understand.
Well, yeah, apparently, you know, you were, you were looking for it, and I, and I said, hey, how about this one, and they said, eh, they actually handed it off to one of the guys, and the guy thought, he said, no, you're working for me, you're just too high.